Good evening, calling the meeting to order. It is the October 22nd at 2018 at 7:15 PM. We're in the Select Board chamber on the second floor in Town Hall. All the way to my right, we have Select Board member John Heard. Next to him is, or immediately to my right is Select Board member Joe Kuro. I am Chairman Dan Dunn. To my left is Select Board member Diane Mahon. And all the way to the left is Select Board member Kevin Greeley. And we're joined by Town Manager Adam Chaplaine and Town Council Doug Heim and Board Administrator Marie Kropelka. I don't have a quote for us this evening, so we're just gonna have to start working right away.
I thought you were gonna do the "Hey Lucy."
Yeah, no, not that. That worked.
No, I know, I know.
We should do it again, maybe.
Yeah.
So, starting off this evening, we have the Consent Agenda. We've got minutes of meeting for August 13th, 2018, emergency endowment for August 13th and October 10th, 2018. And I should say that the items on the Consent Agenda are all approved by a single vote, unless one of the members of the Board wants to separate them. We've requested permit for Veterans Day Parade, Sunday, November 11th, which is 10:30 on November 11th. Approval for the Public Art Youth Initiative banners on the Massachusetts Avenue in Arlington Center. We've got approval to Sandwich Board for the Sarcoma Foundation of America's Acapella Festival to belt out cancer. We have a one-day beer and wine license to the We're a Robin's House for a private event. And we have several new election workers: Michael Dolan, Daniel Marr, Ralph Sexton, Marian Weizenfield, I guess only four.
Move approval.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second by Mr. Heard. Is there anybody here who wanted to talk about any of those things? A lot of times, if somebody has a charity or something like that that they're doing, they will take this opportunity for a little bit of free advertising. But I'm not seeing any. Oh, yes, please. Come on up, welcome, and please introduce yourself and tell us about your event.
Thanks. I've never been here.
You just step up to that microphone and I'll pull it down to your mouth a little bit, so the millions of people at home can hear you. Man, this joke works this week.
I was gonna say, you've gotten a lot of action out of that, mister.
Thank you a lot. I'm glad to be able to be here tonight. I'm the new coordinator for the youth-
And you are.
-banner project. My name is Caitlin Longmire. And I thought I would just take two seconds, or a few minutes, just to give a brief update on this project. It's in its fourth year. It engages teens in grades 6 through 12, 12th grade, who live or attend school in Arlington. Each year, a theme is announced and a call is put out to young artists to create original artwork based on a theme, and then a jury is put together and the winning pieces of art are chosen to be printed on the banners that hang on Mass Ave. Last year, nearly 100 students participated in the program, and 20 pieces of art were chosen. The banners hung for several months down Mass Ave and were just taken down recently thanks to the DPW. And now Arlington Banner and Flag, a small business in Arlington, East Arlington, is repurposing the banners to create reusable shopping bags and messenger bags, which is a really cool reuse of the project. This year, we just announced the new theme, which is trees. And students are going to be encouraged to think about trees in the broadest sense. And they have until November 30th to submit their artwork. Two new things I just wanted to briefly mention this year. This is the first year that we're requesting digital artwork as our preferred medium. So this should give the banners a new look in its fourth year, as they hang on Mass Ave. We'll also accept drawing and collage, just to ensure the project remains accessible to any student who wants to participate. And the other item is, this year, there's a scholarship prize. So three students will be selected by the jury to each receive a $200 scholarship prize. So the jury will choose three students, and they'll be recognized at the spring reception. That corresponds with the Arlington High Art Show. So, just wanted to say thank you for your support. It's a really wonderful project. It livens up Arlington Center and enhances the new cultural district, which extends from Jason Street to Capitol Square. It also engages students and gives them a unique platform to exhibit their work while allowing our community to recognize the talented young people we have living in town. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, my wife is the art teacher at St. Agnes, and a couple of times, students have been chosen. And like, the whole school walks up to the center to look at the banner and, you know, so it's wonderful. It's open to all students in all schools in Arlington. So, thank you.
Yeah, it's a really great project. I've spoken with Ann, so, thanks a lot.
Yep, actually, one, got another one for you. If someone wants to learn more, where can they find you online?
Um, let's see. Arlington Youth Banners?
Arlington.org.
Or ArtsArlington.org, yeah.
ArtsArlington.org?
Yeah.
All right.
And my email's up there, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else who wants to talk about anything on the Consent Agenda? Seeing none, motion from Mr. Greeley, second by Mr. Heard. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, next up, we've got a public hearing on Janet Road. We have a request for a private way. So, who's, is there a spokes? Come on up to the mic, just to kind of review, I think, about where we are is, so you've been, we've had you on the agenda before, and since then, you've got a specific quote, and you've sent out the ballots, and the ballots came back, and it looks like, according to the way I'm doing the counting, you got your two-thirds, and you're looking for our vote to make it happen.
Correct. And we wanted to thank you guys for sending the traffic cone down to us.
Okay. All right.
Move approval. Second.
Excuse me. All right, we have a motion and a second. It is a public hearing. Is there anybody here who wants to speak in favor or against? Somebody waying back. Wait, come on up.
Okay.
Yep. Why don't you introduce yourself at the mic and-
Hello, my name is Robert Mattson, 77 Hemlock Street.
Yeah, tilt it up, there you go, thank you.
There we go, much better. Actually, it's really not so much as an objection, but more of a question as I went through the paperwork. We're actually front Hemlock Street. It's a rectangle lot. Is the betterment being set up according to frontage or address? And the reason I ask is, this is actually my mother's house. It's cut out of a piece of rock. We have no access at all to Janet Road. Certainly don't want to be a bad neighbor and participate in it, but we have a pretty good amount of frontage for a street that, you know, for the last 45 years, you've never been able to use.
And this is, are you at, is this 77 Hemlock?
77 Hemlock, right.
Yeah, so it is here on the ballot and does have an assessment, so it is, it's included.
Yeah, and my question is, are the lots being assessed per lot, or is it by frontage?
Per lot.
Okay, lot only, okay. Thank you.
Anybody else who wants to speak? Come on up.
Hello, my name is CJ Bell, and I live on Janet Road. I've been living in Arlington almost two years. I have a, this is our first house, first community that we've moved to, and I'm very thankful, not only for the traffic cone, but for this betterment process. It helped us organize the whole effort to try to repave this road. And I'm hopefully looking forward to the repair. We have children who love to play on the street, and it's a pretty bad condition there. Little tight cars can't really make it. Even on the better parts of it, they get stuck. So, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I don't see anybody else. Does the Board have any questions or discussion? I forgot to write it down, was it Mrs. Mahon?
Mrs. Mahon and Mr. Greeley.
Thank you. On motion by Mrs. Mahon, second by Mr. Greeley, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, five-zero. Okay, so as you all know, you're working against a clock, and we, so this now unlocks the next step, which is actually collecting money. And we can't write a check until we get some of those checks, so, starting, or the next starting gun just went off.
Hi, Gary.
Very welcome, thank you. All right, next up, appointments. Introduction, New Clean Energy Future Committee Member, David Levy. I do not see, yeah.
He's 10 minutes late.
Okay. Then let's, we're just gonna administratively table that, and if he comes in, we'll come back and pick it up. Newly appointed Elderly and Disabled Tax Aid Relief Fund Committee Member, Jennifer Louis Forbes. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Jennifer Louis Forbes, 71 Mary Street.
Tell us just a little bit about your interest in the committee and your plans.
Yeah, so for the past few years, I've been working for a large social service agency, and I work in the Division of Basic Needs. And so one of the things that we do at our agency is, we work with people at around 300% of federal poverty and below. And we work on income maximization and stability and financial stability. So when the town advertised looking for committee members, I thought it was a natural fit, so I applied for the committee.
Thank you for volunteering.
Move approval. Second.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is done. Congratulations, thank you. Grants Committee of Arlington, Arts and Culture, Heidi Kenig. Welcome.
Heidi Kenig, I live at 13 Norcross Street.
Tell us a little bit about your interest in this committee.
Um, I do research administration in nonprofit, so I work at Harvard currently. Grants Administration for faculty members who do scientific research, and I do art on the side. I do wheel throwing pottery. So this kind of seemed like a natural fit also, and just really, you know, I've lived in Arlington for six years, and I feel like it's time to give back a little bit, so.
Move approval. Second.
All right. Thank you very much for volunteering, we really appreciate it. It's definitely, volunteers are, for these committees, really make a big, big difference, and we really appreciate your, your giving the time.
Thanks for having me.
And I just wanna say, if I read everything correctly, by day, this is what you do in terms of grants management and research, so.
For scientific, so arts is a little different, but yes.
You're aware of the process and how you have to look under every nook and cranny for any kind of grant that's out there.
And if you ever want to do an NIH proposal, I'm your gal.
Be careful what you offer me. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Be very careful.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, now we have a handful of commissions, new commissioners for the Arts and Culture to approve: Kristin Bagnall, Beth Locke, Janet Oberto, Lydia Kenig-Share, and Linda Shoemaker. If you could come on, all come on up, and we're gonna, we're gonna give you a grilling of your lifetime. So just, uh-
See, you're a bitch.
You know, if you've, it's, it's your option, so, why don't you just, first up, Kristin, do you want to step up to the mic and introduce yourself about yourself and what you want to bring to the committee?
Sure, I'm Kristin Bagnall. I live at 10 Wyman Street in Arlington, and I've been working as an arts administrator for about 20 years with, primarily with musicians all over the world. And I've been really impressed with the public art in Arlington, both the way that it's executed and the community response to it. And I would love to be part of that, so that's why I volunteered for the committee.
Thank you. Questions for Kristin? Beth? Beth is not with us. Janet?
Hi, good evening. I'm Janet Oberto, and I'm a longtime Arlington resident. I've done most of my work in Boston. I've worked within higher ed, within the design professions and the arts. And I have, I think it's time to take that home. I've been so impressed with how well the arts are integrated, with the planning office in particular. I've done work with Ally Carter, and she captured me and delivered me to Stephanie and Adria. I have worked very, very well, and I, I also have worked, I've just transitioned three years for Selva Perkins Design, which is an international design firm located here in Arlington, working in public art.
Thank you. Lydia?
I'm Lydia Kenig-Share. I have a, I've been a Arlington resident for 18 years. I have taught every single level as an art teacher, as an educator. I started programs in art, like an Arts Magnet School in Lowell, Massachusetts. I've been an artist since I was a little girl. I love to create groups, so I created ArtLinks Arlington, which is the organization of networking for artists. And I think, and I was elected to this commission by the artist.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Linda?
Hi, everybody, Linda Shoemaker. I've been an Arlington resident also for 18 years, let me share that. I'm also the Executive Director of the Arlington Center for the Arts. And my interest right now in joining with the Commission for Arts and Culture is that ACA is about to, is actually right now in the process of opening the new facility upstairs at the Central School. And it seems to me that for the Arlington Center for the Arts to kind of enter this next generation of its life, it's really time to reach well beyond the organizational, you know, barriers and into the broader community. And I think the success of the new Arlington Center for the Arts will really be measured by the extent to which we're able to engage all of the artists in our community, all of the business community, cultural groups, and so the Commission on Arts and Culture feels like an important place for the ACA to participate.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'd like to move approval for all five. I think we know Ms. Locke, too, she's been before us quite, quite a few times. And actually represents the Chamber on the Cultural District, too, so, as does Linda, represents the Arlington Center for the Arts on the managing partnership core, so I'd like to move approval for all five.
With a second. Thanks. Motion, second. Any comment, questions? As always, thank you very much for volunteering. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, five-zero, thank, all done.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Ms. Shalo, I just recognized, by the way, on the agenda, we didn't have an open forum this evening, and I just noticed that, and I, since I saw you there, I wanted to make sure that we both knew, that you knew that.
I sounded out when I came in.
Okay. Next up, for approval, public entertainment license, Punjab. Is this three in a row?
So, at least, no, four, because it came the one time you bumped us.
Next time, all right.
Yes, we're here this evening to get a, ask the Board for-
To the microphone, please.
Attorney John Leoni, representing Garinda Pablo, the owner of Punjab, the real Punjab. We're here for, to get entertainment licenses, you'll see in the, we provide, we're gonna have it in the back right-hand corner of the restaurant. She envisions having a small band, I don't know if it's gonna be duo, trio, whatever, one or two nights a week, depending on how it goes, and we're here to answer any questions and ask for approval.
Move approval. Subject, all conditions are set forth. Second.
Questions on any kind of soundproofing, dealing with the bands? Are you gonna have like a limit on number of people in the band? Do you have any kind of-
Is it gonna be amplified?
It's going to be like, like small, like five to six people, and we are going to, like, you know, not too loud. Band, and plus, like, our ceiling is, like, already soundproof.
Okay.
So it's not going to, like, you know, disturb any tenants around.
Because I think the closest residence, residence says to you, it's kind of like a block, block and a half behind you.
Yeah.
All those gray.
And we don't have any upstairs, and not, not on this, like, left side either, so.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that, in case anybody's watching, because we do have some businesses, Center Heights, East Arlington, that have residences over them, but you don't. You have about a block, block and a half behind you.
And also between where the band will be and the end of the building is the store rooms and the kitchen area, so additional sound buffer.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I'd also just say that when, when you do something like, sometimes being a little bit proactive to the neighbors and just letting them know that you're doing a change, and giving them a phone number for them to contact, and sometimes, in case there's anybody who gets concerned, the opportunity to give feedback often really mitigates it. So you might want to consider letting your neighbors know, you know, a few nights beforehand, and say, "Hey, I'm doing something new, let me know if it's a problem."
Sure, thank you. We'll do that, that's good.
All right, we've got a motion by Mr. Kuro, a second by Mr. Greeley. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, five-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
For approval, common victualer and all alcohol license, Adventure Pub. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Athena Z. Peters. I'm the owner of Parthenon Entertainment, Inc., doing business as the Adventure Pub, sorry, Adventure Pub.
So, tell us a little bit about your, like, this, tell us about your concept and what you're building and what you're trying to do.
Yeah, sure. So, what we're building is what's kind of known as a board game gastropub. So the thought being that we have a large library of board games that will be there on the premises. You come in with friends or family, you sit down, you order. We have a, a big menu in a Tupper style, so small, shared plates, order a number of things, sit down, pick a game off of the menu that you would like to play while you're there, so we're not selling games, we're kind of renting while you're sitting. And you play a game, and you eat, and you drink, and have a good time with friends and family, and, yeah, and that's the general idea. So play games, have great food, have great drinks, yeah.
Thank you. Questions?
Move approval. Second. Can I, have you done this before? Could I ask?
So, no, this is my first restaurant venture, so I have hired an experienced chef. He's been working in restaurants for over 10, 15 years, and he has a, you know, degree in everything. I did work in restaurants back when I was in college. I waited tables for a number of years, so I've worked front and at the house. But the idea is to also hire a number of people who are experienced. I've spent the last 15 years running video game teams, so, for large video game companies. So I've done, I have many years of management behind me, and my degree is actually in directing theater, so a wide variety of things, but mostly about bringing together creative teams to build something, and so I'm using that to then go and kind of combine some of my passions, which is gaming and eating. To, with a bunch of people who are really skilled in those things. Into one place.
And let's not forget the all-alcohol license.
Yes, yes, as well, the all-alcohol license.
No, thank you for choosing Arlington. I just haven't heard of this concept before, so.
Oh, yeah, I'm very excited also to be in Arlington. I think this is a great space to do something like this. The other places, the places that I fell in love with this kind of restaurant concept were when I lived in Austin and when I visit Seattle for work. And I feel like Arlington has a lot of that same, you know, that, that strong, like, you know, young family tech community that's also very interested in the arts and, you know, combines all of those things together. And so I think this is, this is a great place to be, and I look forward to moving my family here at some point, too.
Good luck.
When I read your resume, I actually have some friends from Turbine and from Disruptor Beam.
Oh, nice.
And so I'm sure, we definitely, we definitely have some people in common.
We need connection. Maybe.
So just, so I'm gonna tell you something, this is something I talk about with every person who comes up for us for an alcohol license, which is, that, so, I don't, as you may or may not know, Arlington does alcohol, we do alcohol enforcement, where we send people into restaurants and stuff and ask them to be served.
Yeah.
And the restaurants that fail that test are most commonly ones, not that they're new, it's something that, it's that they didn't have a good training program for their employees, and then they had some sort of emergency or a shortage, and they put somebody out on the, like, waiting tables who didn't know, who hadn't been trained.
Yeah.
Can you tell me about, like, what your training process is gonna be, and like, things you can do to avoid that kind of problem?
Yes. So I personally went ahead and got tips certified as soon as I decided I was doing this. I, like I said, I waited tables back in college. I lived in Texas at that time, and Texas is very strict on drink laws and making sure that everybody is very trained and making sure you're checking IDs. Actually, every wait staff is required to do it in order to even wait tables. So I intend to keep that policy just personally. I think it's smarter to do that as a manager and a business owner. I intend to make sure that all of my staff is tips-trained and certified, so that they're aware, you know, not only of what IDs they need to check, and they can spot a, you know, false ID, but then also they're aware of, like, what does an intoxicated person look like? How are they gonna behave, that kind of thing? So that's, that's my intention, is before anybody comes on, all of my staff will be trained.
Okay.
Yeah.
The tricky part will be that, that really hard day where somebody calls in sick, and you haven't done that training yet.
Yeah. And that's the reason why I want to make sure everybody's, everybody on the staff, and it's not just like a couple of key people in, because I never want to be in a situation where it's like, there's somebody, we don't have somebody on shift that has been trained in that way. If I train all of my employees before they start, then I don't worry, I don't run into that.
Can I ask, just one follow-up? My family's also in the restaurant business, so, my question would be to you, not that it's a requirement, in the case that the chairman cites, it usually happens, when you say all your staff will be trained.
Yeah.
Sometimes when we hear that, you think all staff, it's all wait staff. And usually what happens is, a crisis-heavy night, you pull someone who's bussing or hostessing.
Right.
And put them on the floor, and they don't have that training.
Yeah.
So, a suggestion would be, and I think that's what the chairman, I usually kind of go right after him, that's when that scenario comes into play. So whatever you have set in terms of your management, where you say, everybody including bussing, hosting, hostessing, you're gonna get tips-certified, or you just make an ironclad rule.
Yeah.
Even if it's a tough night, that's not a body you can even look at.
Right.
So that's yours, you know, as, and the same thing for, if you get into someone who possibly gets over-served, that's usually the case, that someone, as you say, doesn't have the training, doesn't know the cues to look for, someone really animated, talking really loud and getting, you know. So, it's up to you. I'm not saying you're bussers or hostesses or anybody else, but I think if you can delineate that line, that when you do need to throw a player in.
Right.
You let your GMs and assistant GMs know, you can't take from these, or yes, you can.
Yeah.
So that's your business decision.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And we should probably note, you probably know this already, but we do periodically do compliance checks with, with, you know, undercover operatives.
Mm-hmm.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, five-zero. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think you got a team back there.
You brought, you brought, you brought a posse with you.
All right. So there's two things I want to take out of order. One is-
Wait, Mr. Chairman, may I, may I beg your indulgence for a moment? Because this will be coming up on the next agenda, which is to change the handbook. This is something that Marie and Mary Ann Sullivan and I have been working on for more than a year. And the two issues are, what, what is considered an alcoholic drink? And, and as we all know, you can't have a third drink unless it is served with food. So the ABCC has no definition of what's a drink, so we're gonna leave that to each individual, you know, restaurant to make that determination. But that it needs to be clear, for food to be served, for a person to get a third drink, and I'll bring the exact wording for the next meeting, it, it means at least one appetizer per person. So in other words, two people wanting a third drink can't share one appetizer. They'd have to order each an appetizer. So those, it's, it's a minor change, but it hasn't been clear what food means in our handbook, so.
Okay.
Sorry. And now, out of order. Thank you, sir.
Yep, thank you. Well, first off, I see that David Levy's gonna come up, so why don't, well, come on up to the mic. And also, I didn't have a quote, but I forgot. It's Selectman Kuro's birthday today.
Oh, yes.
Happy birthday, Mr. Kuro.
Happy birthday, Joe.
He's got a birthday cake at home awaiting.
Yes. So David Levy is, we're back to item number eight, which is a David Levy appointment for the new Clean Energy Future, the Clean Energy Future Committee. Tell us a little bit about yourself, introduce yourself, tell us a little bit about yourself and...
Yeah, so, my name's David, I've been in the professional space, been in energy for the last eight years, in renewable energy exclusively the last five and a half, do investing for the bank that I work at. And, so I thought, that's been a lot of fun, been a great learning experience, and then, but to be honest, the, it's sort of a perfect time when this committee showed up, because over the summer, I, just a homeowner resident, I just basically got spooked a little bit by just the excessive heat that we just continued to see in our town, and figured there's gotta be something that we can do about it, at least at the local level. So it was a perfect time for this committee, and so, thought if I could lend my experience just on the renewable energy side, but just working practically on the committee, that'd be great if they thought that was valued. So, hopefully it'll be productive, and I'm sort of glass-half-full when it comes to this effort. I think there's a lot of things we can do in Arlington at a, you know, on the margin that could help us in this effort, so, excited to lend a hand.
Thank you. I think we actually already voted approval.
Oh, we did.
We did.
Thankfully, you will.
Yeah. Because I ran into you at Ale Wife.
Yes.
And I was saying I was going to a select board meeting, and you were supposed to be there, too.
That's right.
It's funny, Mr. Chair, because I saw Dave at drop-off the next day, and I said, "Where were you?"
Any further questions, or? All right, thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Dave.
All right, next, moving back to the regular agenda, item number fourteen, common vic license for Yasu, thirteen-twenty-three Mass Ave.
I'm gonna explain to a translator.
Excellent. Why, come on up to the microphone and introduce both, please. Welcome.
My name is George Grealish, longtime resident of Arlington over forty years. This is my uncle, who's lived here about thirty years. We are opening, actually taking over the lease for the old Capri Pizza in Arlington. It's gonna turn into a Yasu gyro, which is gonna be pizza one size, and the rest is gonna be gyros, two spits, I don't know if it's a good word for it, it's like a schwama type of thing, and it's gonna be beef, I'm sorry, pork and chicken. There'll be Greek delicatessence, moussaka, pasticho-type lasagnas, and some type burgers with different things. It's just gonna be a type of Greek appeal to it.
Excellent. Mr. Grealish.
Did you bring any samples of...
Oh, I brought a menu, if anybody wanted to see it.
Move approval, again, thank you for choosing Arlington. Move approval, subject to our conditions as set forth.
Second with one...
Mrs. Mahan.
Just one housekeeping question, and thank you, welcome. I've, I live near the Heights, and I've seen some of the improvements already, and people keep asking me, like, I know, when are they gonna open?
Two and a half months, we just cleaned the whole place up and down. It's absolutely beautiful.
This is just, I'm just picking you like that, I don't know if I should say that word. But anyways, when you put your application M dash S, you mean Monday through Sunday?
Mon, uh, every day, yes.
Yes. I, I just wanna clarify that, because I don't want someone coming in and saying, "Oh, he only applied Monday to Saturday."
Every day.
So, I just now have it on the record, M dash S means Monday through Sunday.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're a five-minute walk from my house, so.
Me, too. Me, too.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Welcome to Arlington.
Thank you.
Or, welcome to a business in Arlington, so to speak. Last vic license is, oh, Yushu, Yuushid? I apologize.
Yuushi.
Yu, oh, of course, I can do that. It was because of the, never mind. Welcome. Why don't you introduce yourself and tell us about your restaurant.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Attorney Russell Chin. My office is at four hundred Hancock Street in Quincy. I apologize for my voice, and apparently losing it. I am here on behalf of Ping Jung, who is a co-owner of Five Star Yu Sushi, Inc. She is asking for your approval this evening to change the use for this location, which was Yummy's Yogurt, previous to this, and she wants to convert that restaurant to a sushi restaurant. Restaurant currently has square footage eight hundred, square feet approximately, and she's proposing nineteen seats. We're happy to answer any questions at your time.
Second.
Second.
Any questions?
No. Thank you for choosing Arlington.
Sounds really exciting.
Stay in.
I'm sure you can't pinpoint a time, but the clock is ticking and you will be opening soon.
She'd like to open as soon as possible, absolutely.
When it's appropriate.
Just wanna say I'm very excited. We've got three new restaurants open, one in each major commercial district of the town tonight, so, thank you very much for hosting.
And I'm assuming with Mahan, your motion was subject to all the conditions?
Correct.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
And quite eclectic, as well.
I know, octopus, bill, I was cruising through.
That is true. All right, we got a donation of acceptance for Spy Pond Park. Do we have, Doug, are you doing this one? Doug, Attorney, Town Council, Hymn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What's before you is a request for the board to do two things. One, to accept two sources of donations for improvement to Spy Pond and Spy Pond Park, and, second, to direct the treasures to open an account for the maintenance of same. The purpose of these donations is to support a larger project that creates shoreline stabilization on Spy Pond and also enhances accessibility. The projects are primarily being funded by CPA funds and community development block grants. However, there's also two important private fund sources. The first is the Judy Record Conservation Fund of Massachusetts, a subdivision of the Massachusetts Audubon Society, and they're donating ten, or awarding ten thousand dollars to help with the Spy Pond Dock Project. The second is a donation by the Friends of Spy Pond Park, and I believe there's a representative here, and I just wanna take a minute to note that this five thousand dollar donation the Friends of Spy Pond Park are making was supposed to be matching to a state grant that the town was applying for. The grant fell through, but the Friends of Spy Pond Park did not. And so they are still donating this money, we welcome them to speak about it.
All right. Come on up. If you could introduce yourself and...
I am Karen Grossman, I'm president of the Friends of Spy Pond Park. I wanna take this opportunity to thank the Friends of Spy Pond Park for their faithful support of what we do in the park, and also the Conservation Commission for listening to the residents that gave feedback during the approval process for the design, making accommodations for the concerns of citizens. And we are looking forward to having a more secure pathway through the park, pervious surface, and less erosion, especially at the entrance of Spy Pond Park, which tends to erode frequently because of the heavy rains that we have running down Pond Lane. So we trust that the town will use the funds that we have donated appropriately, and we look forward to the exciting changes that are going to be evolving in Spy Pond Park in two thousand nineteen. So thank you very much for your support.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, were you done? I didn't mean to cut you off.
Yes.
I first wanted to take this opportunity, I know when I first started getting involved in neighborhood groups and running to be a politician, I saw your name early and often, and I just wanna take this opportunity to thank you. You've been a great community leader for Arlington, but especially for Spy Pond, with its neighborhood issues, whether demotopical or environmental, and I'm really pleased that you've really grown sort of a Spy Pond Neighbor Association into a really good steward of the Spy Pond area, which benefits the entire town, as well as, I can't tell you how many people say, "Oh, I come to Arlington for your bike path." Like, "I come for Spy Pond, come for the restaurant." So I just wanted to take this opportunity to say thank you, and I'm, I'm very honored that you continue to do this, 'cause I know how much it takes to do. And what I'd like to do is make a motion to accept these two donations for the Spy Pond Park project, as well as open and establish a consolidated donation account to accept not only these two donations, but any future donations that the project may qualify and be awarded.
Second.
Doug, if I could just say one thing, that, one of the things that the select board's vote will do is help to make sure that those funds are only used for the benefit of the Spy Pond Park Project.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Doug, on that fund, is it implied who administers it, or who has control over, who, authority to spend it?
Yeah, I think that the, it's the department sort of administering the project, which has been the planning department under, with certain pieces of it overseen by the Conservation Commission.
So is...
So if, if you, I, I don't think it's necessary to take a vote to specify who can expend the funds.
Okay. All right. Further discussion? John.
I'm happy to support the motion with the request that the chair work with the office with appropriate notes of thanks to the grantors. Don't give you more work.
Nope. You're right. Kevin, sorry.
I don't know if this is appropriate under the motion or not, but the, the Judy Record of Conservation Fund, we'd appreciate any acknowledgement in, in the letter. So, if we could add, I'd like to recommend we put together a proclamation and invite them here. And whether or not we do two proclamations, 'cause we should do one also for the Friends of Spy Pond, for their donation of five thousand dollars. So, but, but, want me to make that a separate motion, or?
I'll accept it as an friendly amendment.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Most excellent friendly amendment.
Now, what's excellent? The amender or the amement?
Vent. I mean, T.
All right. Any further discussions?
Sorry, I'm sitting.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Done. Next up, ballot question three, Mel Goldsight. Welcome. Why don't you introduce yourself and...
Hi, I'm Mel Goldsight, Vice Chair of the LGBTQIA+ Rainbow Commission. I'm proud to report that at last week's meeting, the Rainbow Commission passed a resolution in support of the Yes On Three effort to protect equal access to public spaces for all people in Massachusetts. This is a rough day to talk to you about this issue, and I hope I get through it.
It's okay, just take a couple extra breaths here and there, and you'll be...
The New York Times reported just yesterday that federal departments are considering, I may have to hand this off to Arthur, we'll see. Federal departments are considering narrowly defining gender as a biological immutable condition determined by genitalia at birth, and this would be the most dramatic move yet in a government-wide effort to roll back recognition and protections of transgender people under federal civil rights law. So that just came out yesterday. So, on top of that, we have ballot question three here in Massachusetts, and it's a state referendum on November sixth, on whether transgender people should be able to exist in public spaces, and therefore whether they can fully participate in civic life. This issue, this issue should be important to everyone who is committed to equality and civil rights, but since many people don't know or aren't aware that they know anyone who is transgender, discussions of this issue are often debates about gender in theoretical terms and about trans people in the abstract. We should all care about the principle of equal rights, but for me, support for the Yes On Three effort is personal, too. I'm blessed to have many trans friends, including my best friend from high school. I've also been lucky enough to work alongside trans people in carrying out the Rainbow Commission's work. So, many people in my daily life, and others I haven't yet met in this town, but whom I try to represent well, as a commissioner, will be affected by the outcome of question I see the toll that discrimination takes on them, and how exhausting and hurtful it is to them to face renewed uncertainty over the future of their rights in this state and in this country. So as we discuss this resolution on question three, I wanna make sure that we remember that actual Arlingtonians, I know personally, will be affected by the outcome of this election. So I know how important it is for trans individuals and their families and friends to hear from the town leadership that this community sees their hopes and fears, and that we value them as individuals who are important to the life of this town. Back in two thousand sixteen, Arlington Town Meeting made its first statement of support for the transgender community when we added gender identity and expression to our nondiscrimination bylaw. Later that year, these protections were added statewide with an addition to the public accommodations law, which has improved the quality of life for countless trans folks and those who love them. And, most important, none of the dire, fear-mongering predictions from the opposition have happened. This important law provides equal access to public spaces by protecting trans people from discrimination in places like restaurants, movie theaters, parks, hospitals, and public transportation. And it has been in place for two years without any problems. The guarantee of equal access to public spaces has been a great success, and that has allowed transgender people to go about their daily life in peace and to openly contribute to civic life. But now, all of us in Massachusetts are being asked to vote on whether trans people should continue to have those rights. Two weeks from tomorrow, people around the state will vote on ballot question three, and the trans community will learn whether Massachusetts supports full equality or not. Voting Yes On Three upholds the current law, which is vital for providing equal access and safety for all in Massachusetts. Voting No would repeal the law and leave trans people without essential nondiscrimination protections. I encourage anyone with questions about this law to reach out to the Rainbow Commission via email to rainbow@town.arlington MA.us. And in closing, I wanna thank the select board and town manager for your ongoing efforts to promote equality through the work of the Human Rights Commission, Disability Commission, and Rainbow Commission. This is where I thought I was gonna tear up, but I just started at the beginning instead.
Just let it flow, it's out now.
Every time I attend a select board meeting, I walk away feeling more hopeful. I've met such wonderful people through my commission work, and I always feel like I get back way more than I give. So, for anybody watching, I encourage you, if you are feeling weighed down by the problems of this country, get more involved at the local level. Even if you don't have time to volunteer, just pick a town commission and show up to one of their meetings, and you'll see all the good work that people like your neighbors are doing. And also, please, everyone go out and vote on November sixth. So that's it. That's why I proposed a resolution.
Thank you very much. Questions?
I'd like to move to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Diana.
I just wanna say, oh, sorry. Anybody watching at home, or watching at home and hasn't met Mel, first I wanna thank you for your courage and stamina, making it through that speech on this, unfortunately, I don't wanna say important day, but a day that certainly knocks the wind out of you. And if, if anyone wants to, you know, sometimes people say, when I first got on the board, I said, "What do you mean, there's a hundred and seventeen committee and commissions?" And, you know, "They must meet to meet," and, you know, "Don't have anything else to do." If they wanna know how Arlington's committee, headed by Mel, is operating, number one, it certainly is with a lot of passion for rights for everybody, as well as, I think it just comes through at the microphone that this really is a mission, a core value for you, and many others in Arlington, and you and your committee are a great resource, and, you know, even if someone reaching out basically is just a one-reach-out and they don't do anything else, whether it's logging on to the website or getting contact info, that's all they really have to do if they don't wanna do anything more, 'cause sometimes that brings a lot of help and good. But usually, it continues on to something else. So I admire your passion, your commitment, your resolution, and we're gonna get through November sixth, hopefully.
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
It feels doable.
And to the people who started voting, voting today. So, thank you so much, Mel, and please pass our thanks on to the committee.
Okay, I'm...
I have to read this.
Yes.
I have some pronouns I'm gonna leave with you, just in case you get questions directed to you about the ballot. Of course, you can refer them, but just if you want some basic information.
Oh, one second, Mel.
Mel, we're not quite done with you.
Okay.
All right. So, the resolution. Whereas, the Massachusetts House of Representatives and Senate approved the addition of gender identity to the Massachusetts Public Accommodation Lines Laws, MGL Chapter two seventy-two, Section ninety-two-eight, ninety-eight, ninety-eight, on July seventh, two thousand sixteen. And whereas, Charlie Baker signed this legislation, an act relative to transgender antidiscrimination into law, on July eighth, two thousand sixteen. And whereas, the updated public accommodations law has been in full effect since October first, two thousand sixteen. And whereas, in April, two thousand sixteen, prior to the statewide enactment of protections, the Town of Arlington demonstrated leadership on this issue when Town Meeting unanimously passed an amendment to the Town bylaw, Title II, Article nine, Section two, thereafter including gender identity or expression in this policy, ensuring equal opportunity and protection from discrimination in employment, housing, education, recreation, services, public accommodation, and public area in Arlington, thereby making Arlington one of under twenty municipalities in the Commonwealth to enact such legislations by that time. And whereas, Arlington Town Meeting in two thousand seventeen created the LGBTQIA+ Rainbow Commission to promote equality-affirming policies regarding the full spectrum of sexual orientations and gender identities. And whereas, on May twenty-first, two thousand eighteen, the Select Board issued a pride proclamation that included a reaffirmation of its commitment to inclusive antidiscrimination protections. And whereas, the Select Board also voted on May twenty-first, two thousand eighteen, to join the Freedom For All Massachusetts Coalition to show this broad support within the Town of Arlington for these inclusive antidiscrimination protections. And whereas, through actions like these, the Town of Arlington has demonstrated a deep commitment to its goal that, quote, "We will be known for the warm welcome and respect we extend to all," end quote. And whereas, the November sixth, twenty-eight statewide election includes ballot question three, considering whether to upload or repeal a provision in the Massachusetts Public Accommodations Law prohibiting discrimination on the basis of gender identity in places of public accommodation. And whereas, repeal of this law would have a devastating effect for transgender and gender nonconforming members of our families, friends, and community as a whole, which would be against the principles we as a town uphold and reaffirm. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the members of the Arlington Select Board, do hereby express again our commitment to continue to defend transgender equality in Arlington, and hereby publicly endorse the Freedom For All Massachusetts Yes On Three effort to upload the current law and say clearly, discrimination has no place in Massachusetts and no place in Arlington. And it is signed by us all.
Is that, is that something I take with me?
Yes.
You get a present.
Awesome.
All right. Any further discussion?
Thanks, Mel.
Thank you.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. All right. Moving on to warrant article hearings. Article three, acceptance local option, recreational marijuana excise tax, AKA cannabis.
Thank you, members of the board. The first article before you is to send a recommendation to Town Meeting as to whether or not the town will accept Chapter 64 and Section 3 to impose an excise on the retail sale of marijuana for adult use, and also to inquire as to what that percent rate should be. The Finance Committee will probably also be interested in also taking up this matter. I've noted that in my memo. But with that, if the board has any questions, I'd certainly be happy to answer them, but I know that Mr. Chaplaine also has some perspective on it he'd like to share.
So, I think that for a larger context, I think the board is aware, or the board's certainly aware, because the board called the special town meeting in regards to zoning or considering zoning of recreational marijuana in the community. And Marijuana Study Working Group has been working on that, and the ARB will ultimately be the ones tasked with making a recommendation to Town Meeting on the zoning matter. Assuming, well, there will be some zoning put in place. We're not exactly sure what it is, because there's no initiative on behalf of the town to ban the use. So, the expectation is that there could and very likely would be the use in town. And should there be the use, availing ourselves to the resources that the statute makes available by putting in place the excise tax to the maximum extent would be my recommendation. I think Doug mentions in his memo, there is the opportunity to have both the excise tax potentially at 3% and potentially an additional 3% through a host-community agreement, though going forward, there is some uncertainty about whether or not the state will continue to allow, you know, both of those to stay in place. So, I do think that putting in place, given our larger financial context, putting in place the excise tax should the use come to town is a wise choice.
Ms. Mahan?
Just because with any commission or committee on warrant article hearings, I'm a little wary and hesitant sometime, especially where I'm asking your advice in terms of FinCom. You know, I agree with everything you've said. I'm ready to move forward tonight. Recognizing you can't guarantee or speak for the Finance Committee, do you anticipate that there would be wide support against this from the Finance Committee, or you just don't have a sense? Like, sometimes when we vote on things and then, especially with the Finance Committee, if you have a complete opposite polar view, and we can say, well, we didn't know that at the time, you know, you were on FinCom, so, I mean, if the chairman or chair...
You know, that's a very fair question. And I think the chair would agree from the time he spent on FinCom that, without knowing what the current members will say, when, they will have a hearing on this warrant article. I think history has shown that the Finance Committee in Arlington has looked favorably on local option taxes, meals, hotel, and always is interested in seeing what other local option taxes are available. So, I would imagine they would give it favorable consideration, but as you led off by saying, I can't guarantee to that or guarantee that.
No, I'm willing to move forward, positive action on this side, but...
And if they happen to disagree, if whatever we say, they happen to say otherwise, that'll just lead to a productive conversation. I don't think...
Another hearing. Move approval?
Second. Do we have to set the rate, though? It's blank on the vote. You move it for three?
Probably do that when we put out the final.
Given the amount of time, you could certainly amend it if you wanted to later, but I would recommend having at least some idea of what you want it to be. And then, if by the final comment is the vice chair suggesting you want to modify that, you could, but I would recommend having something set.
I'm definitely comfortable with a three.
I think three.
3%.
Yep. Is it 3% of gross sales? Is that what it...
Yep.
Is that what it, 3% of gross sales? Is it gross sales?
The, it is. Sorry?
Gross receipts.
Yep. Sorry. One moment.
Do you have that language with you?
It says 3% of gross receipts.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It's, I'm sorry, yes, it's receipts.
Okay. So, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody here who wants to talk about Article 3? Any other board members who want to talk about it? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Bylaw amendment, LGBTQ Rainbow Commission membership.
I'm back.
Hello, Mel.
Again, I'm Mel from the Rainbow Commission. This is much shorter, and I'm going to be able to get through it. With seven commissioners, the Arlington LGBTQIA+ Rainbow Commission has accomplished a lot in our first eight months. And the community's response to the work we've done has been huge. We began meeting in March and hit the ground running with our first event in June, the Pride Picnic, where over 150 people showed up. We were hoping for maybe 30. We thought that would be a good showing. 150 just sort of blew our minds. It was amazing. Since then, we've held two workshops about transgender issues, and we've collaborated on events with the library, the Council on Aging, the Arlington High School, Human Rights Commission, and the Mystic LGBTQ Plus Youth Support Network. Just this month alone, we're hosting three events ourselves. The last one is this Saturday, the 27th. We invite the community to join us for a potluck and crafts afternoon in the community room at the Robbins Library from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. The Commission will provide dessert, coloring books, nail polish, and a crochet lesson. And of course, people can bring their own craft projects from home. The event is child-friendly and open to all. So, here's the point. We're finding that the more work we do, the more the community asks of us. Next year, we hope to offer events related to Asexual Awareness Week, which actually just started yesterday, and for Transgender Day of Remembrance, which is November 20th. And we have not been able to work that into our schedule this year, which is very sad. The issue isn't just one of workload, though. The Rainbow Commission addresses diversity of both sexual orientation and gender identity. And the letters stand for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, and asexual. And these are seven subgroups that are each made up of people with diverse and intersecting identities with a variety of needs and interests. If we are granted expanded membership, we would seek to add commissioners from subgroups not currently represented within the Commission membership.
Move recommend favorable action. Second.
So, I'll just, one comment that I have is that when Mel emailed me about this idea of, I don't know, weeks ago, my suggestion only was that to make the increase in size optional, so that if they, you know, interest wanes, then they can, you know, they don't have like a bunch of empty seats sitting around. That's the same language we use for capital planning, which we approved in April. And so, I'm glad to see it's there, because I think it's smart. Any other, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak to this one? Joe, sorry.
I just want to say thank you to all the work that the Commission has been doing. And Mel just listed a bunch of the events that you were involved in. But last Saturday, you were actually sponsoring two at once.
That's true.
Right, the Resort of Justice Forum at the Senior Center and the Laramie Project. So, thank you very much.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Five, zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Article five, bylaw amendments, certain personnel. Kind of like that title, it's a little ominous.
Yes. I forget, I won't say it. Oh, my lord, I would have really...
Do we have one for uncertain personnel?
Doug, do you want to start?
Well, I certainly can, Mr. Chairman, but I think Mr. Carmen is here. Mr. Carmen envisioned this article. He was kind enough to develop a draft that captured the changes that he was contemplating. He neat his experience. I think while we all understood the general purpose of this, it was very helpful to sort of see him distill down point by point the things that would reflect the changes. And for those who aren't sort of fully aware of the context here, there's amendments to the Town Manager Act that are pending in the legislature that create a finance department. We've converted from having an elected treasurer to an appointed treasurer. And what Mr. Carmen's suggestions are primarily driven at is recognizing that the treasurer is no longer in elected office with the types of autonomy and independence that you would typically would be reflected in the bylaws. So, I don't know if Mr. Carmen wants to go through the changes that he's sort of highlighted here, but there's a number of them. Some of them are pretty straightforward in terms of, for example, making it clear that the distinctions that the town clerk and the town treasurer would enjoy under the bylaw would only now apply to the town clerk. But more of them are oriented towards things like appointment of an assistant, which used to require, which currently requires, the approval of this board, the appointment of the treasurer itself, as well as certain other details like pension funding, financial review.
Mr. Carmen.
He summed it up perfectly. It used to be an elected independent authority. It is now a division within a department. And so, we have to continue on this progress of changing the town bylaws to reflect the current situation. And so, what we have to do is, there's a section in there that talks about appointment of a deputy treasurer as a balance on the system of government between the selectman or the town manager's office and the treasurer's office. But since the treasurer now reports to the town manager, that's not needed anymore, so that can come out. Replacing that has to be a method to actually appoint the treasurer, so we don't have to, you know, so we have some certainty on how that works. There's a, you know, so there's a, there's another part of it, like, when the treasurer was an independent office, we used to make the treasurer report on financial matters once a year at town meeting, which doesn't make sense anymore, because what you'd be doing is, you'd be telling a department of the town manager to be releasing a report independent of the town manager, which just is, it just goes against everything I think we've been moving towards. So, that would strike that out. The pension funding one, if you recall, this is one of these things that started back in the late 2000s, where there was this ongoing dispute between the retirement board, the then-elected treasurer, town manager, and the Finance Committee over who could move forward with proposing pension obligation bonds. And so, that went in just to clear up a big intergovernmental fight that really can't occur anymore, because we don't have an independent treasurer. So, that should come out. I mean, I went through, I went through like 25 communities to see what they had for different things. Nobody had that in there. I mean, we stood alone on that one. So, it was because of the facts and circumstances at the moment. And then, last but not least, a lot of the heavy lifting goes into, I think it's Section 9, which talks about, as Doug said, the treasurer and the clerk are independent, were independent authorities, and they're not on the M schedule for pay and compensation, vacation, and things like that. And so, with the treasurer now being in the department, we can take all that wording of the treasurer being independent of the government out. And so, now the clerk will hang alone in that wording. And that's partly when I did certain personnel, which is funny, because I knew when we were doing it, we were going to have to change the treasurer and the clerk, because even though the clerk's wording stays, which I'm recommending changing the word appointing authority to just clerk. And so, there's no vagueness on who are we talking about here. We're just talking about one position at that point.
Kevin?
So, anything related to the parking clerk?
No, it's pound clerk. So, the parking clerk...
No, I understand.
No, parking clerk is appointment of the selectmen, so that...
Right, right.
Select Board, so it has nothing to do with this.
All right. Thank you.
Diane?
I guess two notation points and maybe one actual legit question. Just in going through and reading this, I mean, one of the first committees I was on was bylaw recertification. I went through all, everything you could want to know about the town bylaws and the Town Manager Act, but that had to be 20 years ago. So, as I was going through this and reading it as meticulously as ever, I guess I wanted to make two points to the chair. I'm just looking for the actual mechanics of this happening. The first is, I guess it will be the chair, because I'm looking at where Mr. Carmen talked about treasurer yearly reports, et cetera. The chair and the town manager, there's a couple citations in there to the comptroller doing his or her job, and they need to provide that if the current comptroller isn't already aware of this, and I'm not saying she should or shouldn't be, but I just want to follow up on that, you know, this may already be incorporated in the comptroller job description, but it may not. I know the comptroller in previous ones have done monthly reports, you know, that are cited in here. So, I just wanted to raise that point. And in the same vein, the same sort of communication, if it hasn't happened already with the town clerk, because previously, what we're changing, appointing authority clerk, we're changing it to town clerk, I just want to make sure that the town clerk and her staff are aware of, and I'm not saying they haven't read this bylaw, but they may not realize that appointing authority clerk has now become them. So, I just want to make sure, so that we don't hit something like, you know, early voting, and even though we think there's a process or a procedure set out in place, it, you know, I want it to run smoothly, you know what I'm saying? And then, my last question would be, is it Section 9? I just have a question, Mr. Carmen, Dean. When it talks about Section 21, I'm sorry, Section 21, and it's talking about days accrued, sick time, vacation, et cetera, where it says, and it's referenced earlier in the document, and I apologize, I'm sure you explained what it was, when it talks about all elected officials, whether they're certifying the number of days accrued or anything else, all elected officials would be the, wouldn't be this select board. It would be...
Well, it would be, and you get no vacation, and you get a small stipend, and, I mean, no, in this particular thing, this is trying to say that even though the clerk, it was originally written to say, even though the clerk and the treasurer-collector are elected officials and do not go onto the pay and classification schedule, in terms of vacation benefits and different fringe items like that, they're treated as if they were full-time management employees. So, this change is going to remove the treasurer, because once treasurer became appointed, they became part of the M schedule. And so, it will say, standing alone as the clerk, even though the clerk is an elected official and is not on the M schedule, we will treat that position for purposes of benefits and whatnot as if they were on the M schedule.
Okay. And I guess I, I'm 90% there, I think I got my answer. I guess I would ask the chairman and the town manager just to sort of delineate, even if it's just an email to everybody, because when I read this, and now it just applies to the town clerk, and it says all elected officials shall certify the number of days accrued to date to the Personnel Director and thereafter on a yearly basis. I don't remember taking any vote or anything like that concerning the treasurer of the town clerk.
I'm sorry, Diane, Ms. Mahan, where are you?
Oh, I'm sorry. Under Section 21, the second paragraph...
Oh, so I screwed up here.
That last line. It's, I just, I'm trying to wrap my head around it.
So, I apologize. I apologize?
No.
I meant to recommend deleting the second paragraph in its entirety, because the second, I went back and I researched it. The second paragraph was an implementation paragraph, when this was implemented originally in like 84 and then amended in 93. So, that's why the second one reads poorly.
It's mostly that last line, because I, every time I read something like everybody else, and when I saw all elected officials, I try to think back in my memory, am I all elected official? Have I done this thing on a yearly basis?
No. In its final draft, I apologize, in its final draft, paragraph two should be amended to get rid of the whole, like, 1984 stuff. It should just say, they certify each year what they have for time.
And I, no way in being sarcastic about that.
No, you're right. No, you got it.
I read it?
Yeah, you did. Good job.
Where's my, I read it sticker instead of I voted. Okay, sorry. Everybody read it. I apologize. That's why it wasn't making sense. Thank you. Move approval, if it hasn't been done already, has it?
Second.
Thank you, Dean.
Yes.
You know, that doesn't mean you can leave.
Further questions? This is a public hearing. Is there any in the public who wishes to comment on this one?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just two comments. One suggestion, I'm noticing in reviewing this, that there's still, I think, are some previously missed mentions of the Personnel Director, whereas I think the majority of the bylaw has been updated to Human Resources Director.
Okay.
The council agrees. This could be a good opportunity to do that further updating. And then, I don't think you just mentioned this, Doug, but there will need to be subsequent at the spring town meeting changes to the Town Manager Act to comport with these bylaws. But I think we were deciding that strategically, getting this passed, having the Attorney General pass it, then asking for the Manager Act to change would make it, that would be the smoothest way for everybody to approve things in order, just so there's no surprises in the spring.
Okay. And you're going to figure out how to explain that in the comment, Doug?
You got it.
Before printing? No. That's ridiculous.
Further questions from the board?
Nope.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. That is the end of our article hearings. And so, at our next meeting, which is November...
Article 6.
Oh, yeah. Let's do Article 6. John J. Billiford Arlington Scholarship Fund.
I don't know if there's someone here to speak on it?
Dean?
There's only one paragraph, so I shouldn't be a pain in the butt.
When, when the scholarship committee was, when the scholarship fund was created 30, 40 years ago, Arlington was in the lead in creating this. So, we got ahead of a whole bunch of communities. We created this great scholarship fund, and I think Liz Billiford told me on the first night... told me on the first night, they had like three, four, or six recipients in the Lions' hearing room, and they each got like $500, it was very small. It's now a hundred, I think we do $150,000 in scholarship donations per year, we have a lot of private donors, we have a lot of citizens' scholarship donors, it is a very big entity, and when you compare it, there are a lot of very wealthy towns that you talk to, and when you talk about scholarship funds, they're very proud of themselves, and they say, yes, I remember when Mike went to Andover, he said Andover is very proud that they give out $35,000 a year, and he said, okay, be proud, but that's where most people are, they're at like $35,000, $40,000 a year, and we're at $150,000. And so even though we have more money, our bylaws and process have actually fallen behind everyone, because even with the last round with the Modernization Act, it gave an accepting legislation that would make the committee more open and transparent, so you'd have two select board appointees, you'd have some other people that were on it, and it would be a bigger, more open process versus it is right now, which was as 18 months as treasurer, it used to just be me. And it's funny, because I'm going to be very honest when I say this, we have, I think, five people on the committee, 18 months, we didn't have a meeting, and they, I heard the four years before that, they never had a meeting, and so I'm like, well, what are we doing? Like, it's not, it's kind of hidden away, and it was something that I had said early on that I was going to get to, Mr. Greeley and I were going to work on it, and then I kept dropping the ball on it, and we never got to it, but there has to be a point where we sit together and say, $150,000 a year scholarship fund deserves more than zero meetings or output per year. Now, that's not to say that the staff in the treasurer's office who work on it are not fantastic, because they are fantastic and they are the lifeblood of it, but it deserves an additional elevation as a committee that, you know, maybe meets more than once every decade and carries out the work accordingly, because we found it to be a struggle in the sense that, since we weren't meeting and we didn't have things going on, how do you adopt and change things and really get somebody to go out there and champion the program and take it from $150,000 to $250,000, or $200,000 or something like that? It just kind of got stuck in the mud. And so because I know it's a sensitive topic, my recommendation is to have a group take a formal look at it and make a recommendation back to town meeting in the spring.
Recommend favorable action.
Second.
Do we want to put together a short list of who we, like, of like positions, select board, moderator, treasurer, I mean, you know, like appointees? Like, I can think of a couple of names that I would want on it, like Mary Allen, and Dean, if you'd do it.
Maybe select board, FinCom, treasurer, two town meeting members, is that enough people?
So was that five total?
Yeah.
Six? I think small is good, as long as we get the right people.
Because we're picking a committee of people to talk about what the future committee of people, persons should look like, or should encompass.
My one suggestion, because what I struggled with is, I think Kevin would be great for the committee, so I think that's perfect, I think Mary Allen would be great for the committee, that'd be perfect, you need somebody who's used to giving out money, like, that's where we struggled, that's, like, when you're trying to redo this thing, and where I get stuck is, I wasn't, I had very little experience with giving out scholarships, or grants, or donations, I had nothing, and so it just, that's what really dragged me down from doing anything, is I couldn't figure out how I would redo some of these things, even though I need it to be fixed, because it wasn't intuitive to me.
So, I just want to make sure that we've got, we said finance committee, select board, two town meeting members, what was your other thought?
The treasurer.
Treasurer.
How many is that?
That's five total.
That's good, right?
Yeah.
Don't need, you need-
Yeah, okay.
And I suppose we could solicit town meeting members, or at least one, if we are assuming Mary Ellen Billiford may be an interested applicant, solicit people with grant-making or award-making experience.
Do we want to say town meeting members or appointees of the moderator?
Yeah, I think that would be fine, too, it's a broader-
Yeah, and then town meeting members obviously would know how.
Could apply, yeah.
All right, so appointee of the finance committee, appointee of the select board, treasurer-
Appointee of the treasurer.
Appointee of the treasurer and two appointees of the moderator. Is that your motion, Mr. Greeley?
Yes, that is, that is my motion.
And was there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hurd. And so Doug, I think that puts on you to draft up a little bit of a charge for them?
Yes, I think I've got it, the scope of it, one handed, if Mr. Carmen doesn't mind, let me.
Okay. Any further discussion? This is a public hearing, is there any from the public who wants to talk on it? Anybody up here who wants to talk? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Five, zero. All right, now we're really done with the Warren Article hearings, and so at our next meeting, which is November 14th, we will have, yeah, I just want to, I just want to talk about, for a second, I just want to talk about Warren Article process, which is, so we're on, Doug will circulate a draft, selectmen's report, which includes our final votes, and then on November 14th, we'll take those votes such that we can print them in advance of the December 5th special?
December 5th, yes.
Okay, correspondence received.
Received.
Second.
Any discussions or reference?
Jim, Danny's recommending that we recommend this to Tac.
Yeah, okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Five, zero. New Business? Sorry, this is what, I apologize, this is what I was trying to share with you, is that the open forum is the forum for your, what you've been doing the last couple of weeks, your speech, and we didn't have it on the agenda this week.
And so people here can't raise New Business?
No, it's just for the people up here.
And so you've decided that residents can't speak at the meeting, and you won't let a person contribute anything tonight?
We've, I wouldn't agree with that characterization, no.
You won't let residents of the town participate in the meeting?
I will make sure it is on the agenda for our next meeting.
Okay. My new business was to ask what your policy was, and I mean, it seems to me that we're in a state-
Mrs. Shallow, you are out of order.
I am out of order.
Yeah, I am going to proceed to New Business, Mrs. Kropelka.
And just on that point, and maybe we can have clarification from the chair and Mrs. Kropelka, because I'm not saying things have to stay the same, but correct me if I'm wrong, it's been the protocol, policy, procedure of the Board of Selectmen, because this is a very unique night, the night that we have Warren Article hearings, and I think this predates my service coming in 1999, we don't have citizens open for, am I correct on that?
It's always been, it's never-
Because-
The reason we didn't, so to put, say it a more, in a different way.
That's why they, during Warren hearings, there's never citizens open for-
We do one or the other on the agenda, is our traditional policy, and I frankly didn't even think about it when we set the agenda, it just didn't even cross my mind, so that's why it's not there. Thank, that's actually, that's helpful, Mrs. Mahan, thank you. Mrs. Kropelka?
The only thing that I, for most of you, I had remarked, that we had early voting today, and we ended up having approximately 209 people for early voting this morning, which was successful, with no problems, that's it.
And they can keep voting?
Until November 2nd, town hall hours.
Thank you.
I have one important piece of New Business, the long-awaited Housing Appeals Committee hearing on the safe harbor status with the Mugar property will commence on October 25th. Our special counsel has put the town in an excellent position, narrowing the issues that are really contested, we've been vindicated with respect to things like our calculations on group homes, have gotten, forced the state to provide us with quality data on that, that for the most part has corroborated the assumptions that we were forced to make under the regulatory scheme. So the issues will be fairly focused, it will last at least two weeks, and then I don't know that we expect a decision, just for all those who might be interested within the new year, and I don't expect that we'll have a new decision, a decision on it by March or April, it takes quite some time before the HAC is typically able to issue a decision, just given their workload. Thank you.
That is news. All right, thank you. Two pieces of New Business that I think I'll share with a few members of the board. One, Saturday night, was able to attend the firefighter retirement banquet at the Sons of Italy, was joined by Deputy Town Manager Sandy Poole, Assistant Town Manager Mfeedy, HR Director Karen Malloy, and John Hurd from the board, as well as Marie and Ashley from the board's office, so the town was very well represented at the event. It really was just a great event, we were able, was able to honor firefighter Dave Young, who retired, as well as, there was a commemoration or a recognition of the passing of Deputy Steve Corsiello, so it was really a nice, a nice event, it was good to be there. And then on Sunday, was joined by board member Kuro at the Gibbs Open House, the Gibbs Ribbon Cutting and Open House, and that was another great event. I would say there was probably over 100 people there, it was packed into the newly renovated auditorium, flexible, flexible space, it was really a nice event, there was a performance by the sixth grade chorus, glee, I'm not sure what they were called, but-
It was a new musical group, Ignition.
Ignition.
Who ended with hashtag ignition.
Hashtag ignition, yes. So that, another, another very happy event, and it really was a nice event to sort of put a, put a cap on, a nice community achievement of going through the process to make the decision, approving it at the ballot, and then completing the project and opening it on time this year, so that was a very nice event. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Kevin?
So just two quick points, she's left, but it was completely unfair to characterize that we don't let citizens speak at a Board of Selectmen meeting. I believe on every single item on the agenda tonight, Mr. Chairman, you asked, would anybody like to speak on these issues? Maybe not appointments, but that's, for the 30 years I've been on the board, on agendas, on the nights when we are having Warren Article hearings and during town meeting, we don't have citizens open forum, but if anybody would like to put something on a selectman's agenda, they certainly may ask the chairman to do so, but I just, you wrongly criticized there, sir. Just final week for anybody who would like to recommend recipients to the Select Board Awards Ceremony in November, so just go to the town website and you can get all the information you need, but individuals and organizations that you feel deserve one of these awards, thank you.
Okay, two pieces of New Business, recognizing this is a nice meeting time we're at, and it's Mr. Kuro's birthday, I'm going to try to make him as medium as possible. The first one, I really can't talk about tonight, but it's something regarding Town Day, a proposal that was presented to me, so the reason I'm saying this out loud to Mr. Greeley and Mrs. Kropelka, if I don't contact you both in the next day or two, if you could re-remind me, I meant to do it over the weekend, and it just left my head, so, it's nothing earth-shattering or anything like that. Now, my second piece of New Business, and I have had conversations with the town manager, just printed up one page for everybody, and through the town manager with Town Council Attorney Heim. What I would request is regarding the moratorium issued not only by this select board, but DPU in other cities and towns, I was hoping at, if possible, at our next meeting, we have an agenda item, I really want to, as we all do, take action on this important issue regarding what happened in Andover, North Andover, Lawrence, and honestly, I can tell you, Woburn was 30 to 60 seconds away from having a replication of what happened in those three communities, and that was National Grid, so I'm not throwing everything on Columbia gas. So, as we all do, following everything, I got this idea from one of our colleagues on the Quincy City Council, he, through his city council, meaning their town council, did some research and found a state statute which is cited in here, which, what you have before us says "the city council," and I'll let Attorney Heim explain it better than I will, but that's because it's referring to city council, I believe, and have asked for clarification, that this select board also could take this step, and I want to also take it a step further, basically what the city council in Quincy did is they invoked this Mass General Law, Chapter 233, Section 8, which would allow us, the select board, to compel the attendance and testimony under oath of a witness that the select board will legally, and then, so that's, that's the law right there. What Quincy did was they started that process, issued a subpoena for the President of National Grid, Massey Reed, it was delivered, and the request is to have her, as President of National Grid, come to their council meeting on November 1st, I'm not saying any, this is definitely going to happen. What I would like to do is have it as a discussion at a future selectman's board, select board meeting to also veil ourselves of this particular state statute, and to compel the testimony not only of the National Grid President, Massey Reed, but also the DPU Commissioner, Chairman, Chairwoman, Angela O'Connor, O'Connor, and the reason I picked her, and you can go on their website, there's only three commissioners on the DPU, normally in previous administrations, there's 10 to 15, and I'll leave it to you all, they all have very strong legal background, but, you know, myself coming from a craft and working in trenches, and now why, why do I want to do that? And I recognize, we're all $3,000 a year selectmen for the town of Arlington, we're not here to, I'm not a state senator, I don't want to be, I'm not a state rep, I don't want to be, certainly not the governor or lieutenant governor, but I've been very frustrated by a lot of the, you know, I hear from people in the street, you know, it's great that, you know, you're voting these moratoriums and everything, and you say it's about public safety, but, you know, in my opinion, I feel, starting from the governor and lieutenant governor, that it's sort of just been for show, nobody's really taken a true action. What I would do and would want to do, and would discuss at a selectman's meeting, if appropriate, under an agenda item, is request these two individuals come in, hold a hearing, and basically it would be twofold, and this is just where I'm starting, if, you know, two or more of my colleagues agree, I'm not saying this is the parameter of only what should happen, and I'm not trying to have this just to have it and get press, and I want to have it, especially to speak to the individual from National Grid, the President, Massey Reed, about, in my opinion, the tactic she's taking with public safety in enforcing this lockout, and in light of all the moratoriums, DPU on down, I would like her to, A, justify why they have not ended the practice, and I'm not telling anyone how to negotiate, you know, basically, they took this negotiating stance that, union's not going to agree to everything that we want, then we're going to lock them out, you know, whereas, you know, if the union was out on strike, it would be a different PR thing. I'm going to tell you, and I want to question the President of National Grid, I don't think there are actual, you know, they tout, oh, we're meeting weekly, we really want to get this contract and get this settled and get the appropriate workers out there, I can tell you, from my knowledge, background, expertise, I've been at those kind of union meetings, I've been through two strikes with NET and Verizon, what I'm going to predict, not being in that room and not knowing for 100%, I know exactly what management in National Grid is doing, they're meeting weekly, and they'll say, we'll meet every day, what they do is, is deploy, this is my supposition, they come in with a voluminous contract, and under law, all they have to do is change two or three words, or say, oh, on page 14, paragraph two was inserted as paragraph one, and one is now two, there, in my opinion, there are no true negotiations. The other thing that I would want to bring up to the National Grid President, as well as the Chairwoman of the DPU Commission, is centered on Arlington only, I could give you 20 cases, I'm not going to do that, I'm just going to give one case in point of what I'm concerned about. Just this past week, 466 Mystic Strait, grade one gas leak, National Grid comes out with not the appropriate equipment, you know, one personal vehicle and not the big truck, grade one gas leak, they come out, they go and do their work, they go to leave without finishing clearing the grade one leak, under the law, you can't, they have been doing that, and I'm really concerned about, because what happened was, we had someone there from the town, and I, it was one or two names, I mentioned it to Attorney Heim, and he said, yes, I want to say it was someone from engineering or inspections, and then we also had a couple of, I was not there, United Steelworker Arlington residents there, so they said to the National Grid workers, you can't leave, this is a grade one leak, it's still open, and then they said, oh, no, we took care of it, we can go, and they said, well, it's gas now flowing into the house, you know, you find the leak, you fix it, and then you reestablish the gas, and you don't leave until you know it's been done appropriately and everyone's safe to go back in, they said, no. safe to go back in. They said, no. And they said, well, then you can't leave. And he said, well, what, what, this is the National Grid workers, well, what we do is we put some water in the pipe, so that'll keep, you know, and what, what would have happened is, if for some reason that water, through condensation or something else, evaporates and isn't there, you get a house that has pilot lights that aren't lit, but that are in there, and then if that water, that they did as a plug to try to fix that, for some reason, isn't there, the gas starts entering back into the house, that's a very dangerous situation. And then the other thing, and please, and I didn't get to tell the town manager this, the other thing that they're doing at this job site and many others, which they're only coming out for emergency grade one, I don't think they should until they have the, they're not calling DigSafe. And what they're doing is, the town of Arlington has to call DigSafe, DigSafe comes out, because National Grid is sending not appropriate workers, and/or appropriate workers, but they're not equipped with the utility vehicle and the instruments they need, Arlington is now performing that part of the job that DigSafe says has to happen. So one of the things I would say both to DPU commissioner, Ms. O'Connor, as well as president, Ms. Reed, Arlington taxpayers didn't vote for overrides, and aren't paying their regular taxes. I'm not talking about debt exclusions, when you voted debt exclusion, it only goes for that purpose, the gives, the high school. But our tax dollars are now funding some of that emergency work. And I want to hear a solution to that, and/or some sort of recourse that the town of Arlington gets reimbursed, whether it's their general revenue fund, or any override stabilization monies that are accessed. So that would be the purpose, like, I just wanted to explain that part. I don't know if Mr. Chaplin and Mr. Heim want to correct me, or...
So, go ahead.
I would, I mean, I leave it to the discretion of the chair, but I, I think the real core of what you're getting at is wanting to have an agenda item at the next meeting for the board to talk about your request, to see whether or not the board wants to vote to exercise certain subpoena powers it has under statute, to be able to compel both Marcy Reed from National Grid, as well as the DPU via Angela O'Connor, to come here for our hearing for the board. So I think, I don't think the board can take action...
No.
...tonight, but I think what you're asking for is consideration at the next meeting, which I think is a totally fair, fair consideration, but, I mean, again...
And could I ask Attorney Heim, you know, understanding legalese can be played out here?
I guess I'm not, I don't, I would rather have us have the preparation, and then talk about it at the time, like, I feel like we can't have a, we can't have a conversation about it right now, and so I perhaps, I've got your message.
Thank you, sorry.
All right. Do you have any other items? John?
Just like to thank the firefighters, like the town manager did, it was a great event, and congratulate Dave Young on his 31 years of service to the town as a firefighter. And they did ask me to speak, but I didn't have anything prepared, I was not quite at that point in my career where I can speak off the, off that quickly.
Unfortunately, I never have that.
I'll have to take some lessons here. But no, it was a great event, and it was a good, good company at the table, too, so, thank you.
Joe?
No new business.
I don't have any new ones either.
Move to John.
Second.
Next meeting is November 14th, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Happy birthday, Joe.
Happy birthday, Joe.